I'd like to call to order the town council meeting for February 4th, 2015. If everyone would rise and join with me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meetings are recorded electronically. We go by an agenda. Anyone wishing to have something placed on the agenda should have had it to Town Hall by 3:00 o'clock on the last Wednesday of the month. Anyone wishing to speak tonight can sign up over here on the table. Approval of minutes, tab 3. Donna has emailed those out from the January 7th, 2015. Do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 7th, 2015.
We have a motion by Councilman Knoll, seconded by Councilman Huffman, to approve the minutes of the January 7th, 2015, meeting. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, so carry. Reports. Did something a little different for tonight. I was, I watched the Governor Hogan's State of the State address. I think for New Windsor, there's a lot of good news. Whether or not it comes to reality, we will see in the near, you know, within the next two and a half months. So I will comment on pretty much every council committee report because it affects pretty much every committee. Public Works, Councilman Huffman?
I would like to thank the Public Works crew. During the last month, we had several small snow events plus some ice. The crew was out keeping the streets clear and putting down salt, plowing. I think they did a great job. Although it was a balmy 50 degrees today, I don't believe that we're out of the woods yet for the cold weather and the snow. And our budget-wise, we are in very good shape for the snow removal and for the overtime as well for the Public Works crew removing the snow. So we're in good shape today.
They are doing a good job and we're getting a lot of positive comments and feedback from, from the job they do. Any questions or comments for Councilman Huffman? Tag along with the Public Works with the Governor's message today. Governor Hogan announced a supplemental to the fiscal year 2016 budget that will increase highway user revenues by $25 million and give counties and municipalities the most money for road improvements they have received since fiscal year 2009. So that's a, you know, hopefully that goes through. Further, Governor Hogan is committed to increasing the local share of highway user revenues from 10% today to its original high point of 30% over the next eight years. So that's, you know, definitely a good thing. Water and Sewer, Councilman Paulsgrove?
Other than some minor cold weather issues with our wastewater treatment plant and others, I think our water and sewer systems are in good shape unless Jack has anything else to add.
All right. Any questions or comments for Councilman Paulsgrove? Again, in the Governor's speech today, whether or not this actually happens, but if it does, definitely be good for us. This week, Governor Hogan's administration will submit legislation to repeal the rain tax. So that's some funding that we would not have to come up with, but that's to be seen. Public Safety, Councilman Knoll?
The Planning Commission did not meet in January. I'm going to defer to Corporal Towson for the public safety report. I think everybody's aware of the robbery we had in town. He can collaborate on that a little bit for us.
All right. Any questions or comments for Councilman Knoll? Again, in the speech, this week, Governor Hogan's administration will be submitting legislation that repeals income taxes on pensions for retired military, police, fire, and first responders. So it may not help the town, but it may help some of the residents if that happens. Economic Development, Councilwoman Schultz?
Okay. The county's economic development office sent out the Small Business Week materials, which I think I mentioned at another meeting, and that is March. Small Business Week is March 2nd to the 6th, and the theme is Carroll County Open for Business. And they're distributing posters and social media materials, and I'm going to take care of distributing those to the small businesses in town. And I'll post something about it probably most of the days of the week on our Facebook page, too. And then I'll be attending the Carroll County Downtown's meeting on the 27th.
Okay.
Oh, and there's a networking event for small businesses on March 5th at the Chamber, so I'll post that on the Facebook page, too.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments for Councilwoman Schultz? This doesn't have a big impact, but it, for those that it's affected, it could if it's passed and that's proposed cutting personal property taxes for small businesses. This legislation would create a tax exemption on the first $10,000 in personal property, entirely eliminating this tax for more than 70,000 small business owners or one-half of all Maryland's businesses. Community enhancement, Councilman Smith?
I am still working on the HEAL paperwork as far as if there's anything available for grants to go along with the, the Walk with the Mayor, which obviously was canceled this, this week because of the weather. I met with Roy again, and we talked about some, some ways to enhance that a little bit. Obviously, we're a little hindered by the weather on that. I've received numerous emails from some of the bands that we've used in the past, as well as some new bands that are interested in coming back. Rice's Town Jazz Ensemble, as you know, were canceled last year. That's one of our biggest draws. They are, they are very much wanting to be involved again this year, and I promised them the very first one if, if we can actually work that out. So hopefully, we'll have some, some finalized bands coming up for the, for their concert in the park during the summer. That's about it.
You have no one under contract yet?
No.
Just a thought that I had. I know, you know, it's easy to plan or maybe schedule every Sunday in August. Maybe just consider, and the council can talk about this, and if you don't want it, that's fine, but maybe the second Sunday from every month, from June through September.
That would, that would certainly help us with weather-wise.
You get four, and that you're not committed, not that it's a big commitment, but you're committed to every Sunday?
Right.
In August.
I would, I would love to do that. We certainly have plenty of time to discuss that. We certainly have plenty of time to be able to adjust schedules for that because nobody's under contract. Like I said, I promised Rice's Town Road, or Rice, Rice's Town, I don't know why I keep saying that, Rice's Sound Jazz Ensemble that they can have their pick of dates. So yeah, we have plenty of time to be able to do that. And I personally think it's a good idea because it does allow for some weather incidences.
And that way, we could have something going on every month.
I agree.
For four months.
Yep.
So think it over.
Yep.
Not that we are exempt from this issue in New Windsor. However, another thing, well, any, anybody, I'm sorry, have comments or questions for Councilman Smith? Later this month, Governor Hogan will execute an executive order to address the heroin epidemic in Maryland, which is huge in Carroll County. I'm not saying, like I said, we're exempt from that in New Windsor, but I think we're on a, on a positive side of that epidemic. But that will definitely enhance all the communities in Carroll County. Mayor's report, busy month in January. Attended the state's attorney's swearing-in. Had, attended the delegation breakfast meeting at the Brethren Service Center. Due to the snow, a few of the delegation weren't able to attend. However, later that morning, there was a legislative meeting with the delegation and county commissioners that I attended. Attended the Carroll County Traffic Team meeting, which I usually update you on road repairs and renovation, or not renovations, but repaving. They will be repaving from 31, from Mefford to New Windsor probably later this spring. So I will update you on that as that happens. Frank and Ed and Kim and I, and a couple others, met with Tim Murphy from the Maryland Department of Business and Economic Development in regards to the Brethren Service Center. As everyone knows, that will soon be on the market for sale, and there is an interested investor that has shown great interest in purchasing the Brethren Service Center. So we figured we'd start seeing whether or not we can get some state funding to make that happen. Tony Town Business Breakfast Meeting. Try to make that every, every month. It's a nice little event that Tony Town hosts. Basically, Nancy McCormick has been putting that on for several years. It's well-attended and has great programs. If you can make that, it's a nice event. Attended the Maryland Heritage Area's Program Grant Workshop. Last year, we submitted a grant application, did not receive the funding to replace the roof at Deelman Inn. So we will be submitting that again. I already submitted the intent letter that we will apply. Carrot, I attended the Carroll County Chamber of State of the County address where the five commissioners addressed issues within the county. Kim and I met with CMC staff in regards to our town website. We're still looking to revamp that a little bit. We've looked at a couple of different sites. One provider does basically municipality, so that had showed us a lot of interest maybe to pursue that. Was in Indianapolis last month to testify on a, on a bill, and while I was down there, I was able to meet with all three delegates, Delegate Kreb, and now former Delegate Reedy and Shoemaker, and talked about our issues and possibly meeting with the Secretary of MDE to talk about the remediation of our lagoons. Ed mentioned about the Walk with the Mayor. We did have the first one. Second one was snowed out, and the next walk is scheduled for Tuesday, February 10th, at 5:30. We meet at the Town Hall. We didn't have big numbers, but we, we, we were concentrating on quality of walkers. But we'd like to, we'd like to increase those, those numbers, but I want to thank Councilman Huffman and Paulsgrove for coming out. Frank and I attended the county commissioners' mayor's quarterly meeting where I suggested that the county fund possibly $200,000 a year for five years to get a million dollars into a, a fund where municipalities could use those funds, a revolving loan fund to purchase. One example was our upgrading of our meters. Instead of having to budget $70,000 at one time, which we really would have a difficult time doing, we could borrow that $70,000 and pay it back over a five-year period, you know. So to be seen on that one. Frank's going to keep us updated on that. He'll, he'll keep tabs on that, where that stands. I attended the New Windsor Fire Department's annual banquet and presented them with a $10,000 check. They are very appreciative of that. We now are probably, if not the highest, one of the highest money donators in the past 11 years, I guess it is, that we've been doing that. Frank and I attended the State Highway Administration Partnership Progress Meeting for Streetscape. That's still going on. I think our next meeting, the date has been changed, but we'll have a meeting here and then a walk, walk around to take a look at a few different things on High Street and Main Street. Again, I met with the interested investor regarding the Brethren Service Center. He has a lot of great ideas that I think will bring a lot of people into town. As we get more involved with that, I will share those details with you, but he'd like to keep them a little quiet right now. And I requested Lehi Cement Company to host a workshop that would deal with conveyor belt that will soon be in progress of being built and associated detours that will be happening with that, and then also any other topics that the conveyor belt may bring to citizens of, of this area. Tentative date is in April. Lehi has not, correct me, Andy, but has not signed a contract with any contractor at this point. So once that is signed and they sit down and talk about a schedule, then we will schedule, or Lehi will, will schedule the, the workshop. Most likely, it'll be down at Windsor Station at the Fire Hall like we did a couple of years ago with the other workshop. Any questions or comments for my report? Community Deputy Corporal Towson?
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
For the Sheriff's Office, incidents for the month of January for the town, it looks like it was about 85. It was relatively quiet due to the cold weather as usual. We did have three auto accidents, but none of those were personal injury. Two of those were at church in High Street, possibly due to visibility. Okay. We did have the robbery, as you all know. On January 31st, 2:43 a.m., unknown subject appeared to be a white male, around 5'9", 180 pounds, entered the 7-Eleven. He had black shorts on, which, you know, it was pretty cold that night, and a gray sweatshirt. He had a mask on, totally hiding his face, so you really couldn't see anything on there. He had, he displayed a large bayonet-style knife, and the clerk could give him $100 only. The clerk did not have that and said he was calling the police, meant they'd be there within three minutes, and as soon as he said that, the guy just skedaddled out the door. Through investigation at the time and the evidence collected, we believe the subject probably got into a vehicle and took off with the K-9 track and all, leaving the store and then abruptly ending. Usually, that's what it means. So that is open case at this time. We did send a picture to the press for hopeful identification, and we are working with some other people in the area for that. On January 17th, 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, numerous times, usually in the early morning hours, deputies responded to the area of the Brethren Service Center for a resident of that location who was possibly having an issue with his medication. We're not sure at this time, however, he was warned on several occasions to not call the 911 system. Chief Coe and his people were out as well on numerous occasions at that location. We did end up arresting that individual and charging him with telephone misuse and disorder conduct. Let's see. Vehicle stops for the month. Looks like I issued 21 citations and/or warnings, and I concentrated on the problem areas in town, Lambert Avenue, and then, of course, the stop sign as you brought up last month about that. It's an ongoing thing over there. It always will be, and we'll just continue to keep it, you know, keep check with it. The people, a lot of times, they are not seeing the flags, at least that's what they're telling me. I had two of them today, and they're like, "What flags?" And I was like, "Oh, there's two orange ones right there. Look in your rearview mirror." So I don't know, but we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep on it. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, sir.
On that picture?
Yes, sir.
Their sweatshirt now, maybe that was the first time he ever wore that sweatshirt, but it had a name on it, and I was trying to find that.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I don't have the report in front of me. I think it was Voome or Vo, it began with a V. It was...
Yeah, it's something that just not everybody is wearing.
Yeah, it's apparently, and the shoes, we were looking at that, too. It was some things on there. They had, they were black, but they had a little white design on the bottom, too. So we're looking at all of that stuff. And like I said, with the fact that, that he wore shorts, to me, tells me that you either live very close or you got into a vehicle and took off. So, and of course, apparently got into a vehicle and took off the way it appears. And of course, the snow is our friend in this kind of weather because then we can see tracks and things of that nature. It kind of helps us with our investigation, no matter where the crime is. So I don't know. I, you know, asking for just $100, that's usually uncommon. Usually, they're like, "Give me all your money."
Yeah.
So there's some differences with this, but we'll, we'll keep on it and hopefully...
Sure you will.
Usually, something like this will happen again, and, you know, you put all that evidence together, and it's usually what you get. So if somebody starts talking, so we'll, we'll see what happens.
All right.
Glad nobody got hurt. That's me.
True. Thank you, Mark. West Carroll Rec Council, our new representative for New Windsor, Heather McKenzie. Nice to have you here.
Good evening and thank you. So I just wanted to let the council and the community know that we now have a new board. We are very excited to enter the new year. We're interested in strengthening community relationships and being more collaborative and finding activities, not only for the youth, but also the adult population as well, if there is interest. So we're going to be reaching out to see what the community in general would be interested in, in having as far as programs go. In the meantime, we are still recruiting for a volunteer to attend these meetings. So until then, we will try and alternate and get out here as well so we remain in contact. We are also looking for a soccer coordinator to coordinate and manage the program. We'd like to get an individual as soon as possible. The program typically begins in the fall and registrations occur in the spring. No experience is necessary, and we're more than happy to train and give the materials that are needed. The last thing, just want to go over a couple of registrations. Track and field has a registration tomorrow from 6:30 to 8:00 at Northwest Middle, and then next Thursday from 6:30 to 8:00 at New Windsor Middle. Boys and girls lacrosse also are continuing to accept registrations online, and the baseball registrations closed last month, at the end of the month, so...
What age do they start soccer? What's the youngest?
I believe five.
Five?
I think we have a seven U, so five to seven.
Five-year-old. How old's Natalie?
Quarter-mile.
Quarter-mile. There you go. We might have a coordinator for you.
Again, no experience is necessary, and more than a link to support.
Thank you. Fire Chief, Tom Coe.
In case my wife watches this on TV, she's really six.
Okay.
Good evening, and on behalf of the Fire Department, we'd really like to thank the town and the town council, the mayor, for their continued support of the Fire Department and your generous donation that was given at our banquet in January. While the Sheriff's Department likes to slow down on the cold weather for call volume, we tend to get busy. So our fire responses were up in January to 33. We ran structured fires everywhere from Manchester to New Midway, with significant ones in Westminster, one in Liberty Town, and one in Union Bridge. Our EMS responses were 55 for the month of January, and our ambulance continues to be busy. Other than that, things are status quo at the firehouse. We continue to have bingos on Tuesday night, and our next community breakfast is on March 1st, Sunday, March 1st. So any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Just on a personal note, real quick, again, we had to call on you guys again for my father, having a 96-year-old father whom I'll probably be seeing you guys a lot, but you guys did a great job, and I want to thank your staff for, for providing him excellent care. Thank you.
Anytime, anytime. Thank you.
Town Manager, Frank? Tab 5.
Just up, update on the number of projects we're working on. We have a good many projects. Our main, main water line base mapping project, right now, we have the Rural Water Group doing the locating of the water line, and they've been out two times, and they've located , I don't know, maybe a mile of it, and they're making good progress, but they work on that in between other projects. And as the segments are being done, then we have some posts that we're going to drive in to mark those, some blue posts that identify as a water line. So hopefully, that'll nail that down for us, and then we'll get that surveyed, and that may be as far as we take that for a while, but, you know, we're into it this far. Let's, let's get that done.
Is notification being made to the property owners?
Well, that's kind of why there are, one of the reasons, another reason we're on hold is I do want to do that calling, and just really haven't gotten to it yet.
Okay.
Our lagoon decommissioning, and this is, other than our, our pumping stations, this is kind of like priority one to get this, this, this project underway. GMB's had some meetings with MDE about closure plan, and later this month, GMB's going to be meeting with Phil Snyder of Environmental Organic about some of the elements and methods they use to dispose of sludge, which is how do you get rid of the sludge is, of course, the key to the closure plan. So hopefully, by the end of April, we, a closure plan will have been submitted to MDE. Once we have our closure plan, then we're in a position to put that out for requests for bids to get pricing and see if we can, we can get that project done. So that, I'm really trying to get that done because it's just been hanging too long. On another front on that, I did file an application with MDE for, through the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration for a loan to supplement the funds that we have. We have about $650,000. I think it's going to cost twice that or a little bit more to do the project. I'm not really very hopeful, but I decided to run that string out anyway because we had applied once before and just didn't, just didn't make it very far up the list.
Maybe the Sustainable Communities pushes up a little bit, but how far?
You know, you try to, you try to make the case that maybe it's good for the environment to get that taken care of, but I don't know, you know, their focus is more on these discharges and the polluted loads and streams from wastewater treatment plants and overflowing pumping stations, and for better for worse, we don't have that. For better for us, but, you know.
Right.
You can't get, so it makes it difficult to get loans, but we are in, we'll see what happens. Streetscape Planning Assistance, as, as the mayor mentioned, we had a partnering meeting in, in January, and we had a pretty good discussion about what's happening with the town's storm drain system in relationship to doing the project because the state understandably wants to cut that off as soon as they can. In other words, what I'm saying is they don't want to go any further in upgrading and doing things for our storm drain system than they have to. And, you know, I think one of the reasons we're going to have this field walk is I kind of said, "Until you stick your head down in some of our inlets and storm drains, you're not going to understand when I'm explaining to you that our system isn't really up to taking..."
It's unique.
"...any more water." So we had a long discussion on that at the meeting, so I think I got my point across on that. The other part of that is that, you know, we have, we're considering having the state actually do the engineering and design of our utility upgrades under their contract and us just paying them rather than us trying to do it as a separate project and administrate it that way. Their consultant engineers, a company called JMT, Johnson, Murmer, and Thompson, which, if you may recall, is actually on our shortlist of engineers that, when we send projects out, they're one of the engineers you've qualified. So we have a relationship with them. And I did speak with the engineer from JMT this week, Monday, Monday maybe, went over the scope of work, you know, what's expected, and so I know that they're working on the pricing. I asked them to try and get that pricing done by the 1st of March so that we can consider that as we go through our budget process because, I mean, we're going to have to pay for it. It's not going to be free, but, so that, that's moving along. Our pump station replacement project, which can't come, it's can't come any sooner than, the sooner the better. We're, I think we're, we're hanging on, but it's like this. The Crown Tractor M2 has applied for the building permits. They've been processed for the project. The various review submittals, you know, they have to submit things for review by the engineer, shop drawings, materials, plans, and things like that are going through, and we're making good progress on that, that phase of the project. And I talked with their, their site fellow who's going to be in charge of their site, their site foreman, and they anticipate that in early March, they're going to begin installation of their erosion and sediment control devices and site prep work so that along come 1st of April, when components start to arrive, they'll be, they'll be ready to go. So we should see something down there in, in the very near future. The Deelman Inn, as you may recall, where the consultant was here in January, gave their report, and now they're working on the feasibility, further deeper feasibility analysis of the selected options, and I expect that to be complete by April. Just yesterday afternoon, kind of out of blue, I did get a call from a representative of Preservation Maryland. Remember, this was designated site on their, their program, and they were just calling to see the status of it. So I'd give them, did give them a status check, but that, that means that within their structure, that's still alive, so that's something we need to keep, keep in mind as we go forward.
Yeah, and they have a new director, too, so I'll have to contact him.
You know, we're still, we're still out here, and we're still working on it. And again, kind of out of the blue, I have a realtor that's going to be coming next Wednesday. He's going to do a walkthrough, has a, has a client who might be interested in, in the property. I don't know the client, I just know the realtor. So, you know, there's, there is a little bit of interest, which is good. Tippis Lane feasibility study, that's, that's ongoing. I had an initial review with the consultant on that, gave them some comments, and I sent them back to do a little more work to analyze the downstream pumping stations, be that Coe and Main or Blue Ridge, to make sure what the impact, if any, to have maybe upgrade or do, to retro... or do, to retrofits on those stations as part of any greater flow that comes from out of Tibbetts Lane. So I expect that to be back also in April. Verizon cell antenna, you know Verizon is, is interested in being located on our pedestal tank and they are going through the process of getting their engineering review done and getting their lease documents done. Michelle and I have worked on, on the, it was in a switch kind of, they wanted us to come up with the lease documents. Fortunately, our council has had some recent experience with that sort of thing, which we've been able to take advantage of and so we have some, we have some lease documents and I'll be sending them out after a few more, one more review with Michelle to them. Without getting into the specifics of terms because I don't know them yet, we are trying to push the terms to the forefront. In other words, you know, there's terms that were done on our other agreements are ten and fifteen years old. We don't want to be, we don't want to be behind the pack, we want to be here because once we're locked in, that's where we're going to be. So trying to push those terms as far as we can to the front of the pack in terms of how much we'll get. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in one of our other items.
Okay.
About what that might be. Just to follow up on the, the town managers, we'll have a meeting on the eighteenth and we will be recapping the items that were talked about at the mayor's commissioners meeting and then come up with strategies for a couple of those items about how we can keep them, those balls in the air and get some, get some activity on those. So that's, just want to let you know, that's what we're going with that. For our snow removal, I do, I also want to compliment the guys and it's been an interesting year so far because we haven't had that much snow, but we spent a lot of time out there. And just make an analogy, when I, when I was learning how to shear sheep, which most people probably didn't know, I ever didn't know how, but my instructor, someone asked well, which, which is harder, the big ones or the little ones? And he said, the big ones are harder, the little ones are more difficult. And that was, that's exactly true with snow. A big snow is hard, you've got to push and work and work. These little ones are more difficult because the, the snow was supposed to come at ten o'clock, then it was coming at midnight, then it was coming at one and we had to keep pushing our crew back and pushing our crew back and they didn't come in then until six. So then they worked. Then we sent them home, then the temperatures went down, had to turn around and bring them right back in. So it's, it was more difficult. It wasn't that much snow, but it was more difficult.
You're better off with the ten, ten in snow.
Yeah, you know, if they're coming at ten, just push snow all night.
Yeah.
Everybody said, oh yeah, we know what you're doing instead of, so that's, that was, that was it. So that's, that's the updates on everything that I have. Is there any questions anyone has for me?
Thank you, Frank. Treasure, tab six, Donna?
In January, in our general fund, we had deposits of $77,476.51 and our expenses were $75,744.50, but it left us with a balance of $262,578.72. On the enterprise side, our deposits were $251,868.43 because there was a transfer of $140,000 from our loan reserve fund over to pay our loan payments. And then our accounts payables were $220,492.12 and we have a balance in there right now of $115,426.23. Three Rs in our capital reserves are at $316,647.77 and our land repayment is now down to $5,146.55. We will start to rebuild that now. Money market is at $39,289.81 and our LEHI remains unchanged at $675,168.72. Any questions on just the financial part? Okay, now moving on, this is an election year, just to alert everyone, coming up and the important dates are that it is occurring on May the 12th and the polls will be open here, that's where you'll vote from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. All the information has been posted on the webpage. Certificates of nominations are available and the, there are three council seats available. That would be council member Schultz and Knoll and Huffman are up for reelection. So we encourage everyone, if you're interested, the deadline to file for those certificates is April the 13th of 2015. And any questions that anybody might have in reading information online, you would see, you would talk to me. Any questions?
One, the three judges are willing to do it again?
Yep, already been contacted.
I figured, they did a good job last time.
Yes.
So.
That is Shirley Altvater is our chief judge and Darlene Blackston and Bill Schneeman are the other two. So we will have the same board now. In the next election, you'll have to reappoint.
Right, right.
Okay. Any questions, other questions?
No, other than, no questions for that, but for the upcoming election, whether we have three or more than three running, I'd like to see us have a candidate's forum. I have someone that is willing to talk a little bit, to me a little bit further about being the moderator for that, but I think that gives every, all the candidates an opportunity to let the citizens know what they, what their feelings are about the town and its future and gives the citizens the opportunity to hear, so, and hopefully make a better decision. Ready? LEHI update, Andy Rigler. Thanks for coming.
You're welcome. My apologies for being absent for a couple of months, I've been traveling all over the place.
Not a problem.
Just give you a kind of an update, project bids were returned for review back down in town, so we're hoping somewhere around March, we'll have a shortlist and we can go ahead and make a final decision somewhere in April. Then you can expect to see contractors mobilize to the New Windsor, Union Bridge area sometime in April, end of April, construction will start. We are still working on the detour plans that you mentioned to be reviewed by the county and all the applicable agencies. Monitoring wells are going to be installed, there's several that have been installed, but there's several more that we have to install in the New Windsor Quarry property. So if you've seen the big dozer out by my house, that's to, to add some roadways for the well drilling equipment to get in to the areas that they need to install those wells. As I mentioned, the access roads are going to be built, so there's, there's several that need to be put in. See, we'll hear a little bit of noise back there during the day. We did identify the Seymour House, what we, we refer to as the Seymour House, the rancher that's on what used to be Coe Drive. That house will, will come down. It will come down sometime in April. There is a retention pine that is in that location, so that house will come down. We did reach out to Tom Coe and the Fire Department and offered that house for training for the Fire Department, so we're going to do our part with the, the well and the septic and the electric and so forth and then the Fire Department will take over from there. Project team, the assistant project manager is Frank Macheur. He'll move down to Carroll County in March sometime. Him and his family are actually buying a house in Westminster, so they'll move down, he'll be here for at least three years. He'll work with the plant, but also as the assistant project manager. He'll be here full-time and he will come to these meetings with me or in place of me. Project manager, his name is Manuel Montejo. He will be kind of in and out. He plans on renting a house in Westminster, but he'll be kind of going back and forth and keeping the folks in Allentown happy with information, but you may see him pop in as well. I've invited both of them already and they plan to attend whenever they can. Also supporting cast engineers and so forth, they'll come in and out as necessary to support the project. Our goal is to hand over the project to the contractor and they manage it, period. We're here to kind of supervise, if you will, but not to change anything. Once it's done, it's done. We do plan to hire one local person, we'll call him, for administrative duties for that project, so again, it'll be a temporary position for around three years. Base camp for the project is going to be over at the Union Bridge site, right as you come into the, what we call the east entrance off of Quaker Hill Road. Base camp will be off to just the left there, we call it the back forty area. They'll have some trailers there for training and some of the engineers will have a trailer there, but there's also discussion of one of the three houses, the last houses on the left on Old New Windsor Road that we own, maintaining one of those houses as offices. So they may move some people into those offices and have some people over here as well and that, that'll just be the LEHI employees. Again, I did mention, we discussed the abandoned houses with Tom Coe, obviously the one on the Seymour House and then the one further up on Old New Windsor on the right-hand side where the conveyor goes through. Both of those will be offered and then any others that will be demoed, or you know, well obviously we'll offer those to the Fire Department to continue training. And they are included in on the detour discussions. Under some new business, we did arrange a meeting for this Friday to meet with Sheriff Dewey's to go over the project as well, just in general to start the discussion so he's aware of the project, the path itself that it'll take, kind of some areas where we know that eventually there's going to be detours, obviously the Sheriff's Department will be involved once those are finalized, but just to get him introduced to us as LEHI and you know, when we were called Sheriff's Department, who they would need to talk to and maybe generally some locations that they may go to once the project gets off the ground. So we're meeting with him Friday and I, also to establish a reporting procedure based on his, you know, terms, what does he expect from LEHI or the contractor when there's an emergency and we need to contact the Sheriff's Department. Is there a procedure that we need to follow so we can make sure that the deputies get to the correct place? So that'll happen this Friday at one. And that's all I have. Some questions?
And I, you know, I've expressed the can't in the past, but just, you know, pass the word on that we do have some vacant buildings here in town that if you need either offices or storage or something, you know, we're, we can not, you know, put you in touch with the right people.
Okay.
So, and then we also have food establishments that your workers are gonna, contractors are gonna need.
I'm hoping that they are flooded with business.
That's what we're hoping. Thank you, Andy. Residents' concerns, anybody sign up over there?
No, sir.
No, okay. Any old business? Right to new business? Fiscal year sixteen, budget review schedule, tab eight?
Okay, of course, we're starting our budget process, we've been having, for the last few months, I've been giving you a little updates on certain aspects of it, so we're actually into the process, but just to formalize the schedule and I really worked this backwards. I don't have, haven't received the official notice, but May 22nd is the date that if you're going to make an adjustment to your tax rate, that's the date we have to notify the county comptroller in order to implement that. So if there's any indication you're going to change your tax rate, we're going to have to stick to a schedule that looks like this. Now, in the past, if you didn't change your, your tax rate, then the adoption and things like that could slip on into June, which we have in the past. But I guess the, the first meeting is, our work session in February is scheduled for the 17th and at that time you were asking me to do a, an overview presentation, that, you know, that's the night we're going to be up at the Brethren Center and that, that will kind of kick off our process and you can see the, the dates as we go through with the idea of a budget introduction at April 20th and then that really sets a timeframe for notice of the budget hearing, the actual budget discussion, hearing and then notified. So that's, that's the schedule from February through May 22nd. And there's not, there's really not a lot of flexibility in that if your thought is you might make a tax rate adjustment.
If, if I may, Frank, you know, and we've talked a little bit about whether we need a, a tax increase or not, but I think if, if we're even going to consider it like we've talked, you know, sometime here between March, or March and April, we need to have some kind of a public meeting.
Okay.
I think, I think the sooner we can get out and at least start discussing what we're doing, the better. That's, that's my thought. And I know we may not have enough information, but at least we can, we can start setting that, setting that up if necessary, so.
Let me, let me tell you what, yeah, let me tell you what I'm planning to cover and if you have additions or adjustments to that between now and the 17th, you know, we can, we can do a little bit of it on the fly, but I would bring you an updated, year-to-date fiscal report, which is how much we've spent and how much we've received in revenues and how that looks against our budget. That'd be the first part of that. The second part of that would be some revenue projections about what we can expect our revenue to look like in the next fiscal year and maybe a little bit beyond that, as well as where you might think our, we might think our expenses are going. So you'll have a, up to, you know, bring the date and then a look, a little bit of a look forward and then a highlight on some of the things that you're going to have to make critical decisions on. And we've been discussing them in terms of the road repairs and capital projects and the like. We've been discussing those as the months went by, but you know, and once again, you have to make critical decisions on that. Some of those, you have flexibility, some of the others, maybe not so much flexibility. So that's, that's my thought for the 17th. If you have other ideas or things you want me to incorporate, please let me know. Things are happening in Annapolis, as the mayor pointed out, that we really don't have control of and things like highway user revenue, that may, that decision may be made after you set a budget. If they're, if the governor's going to supplement the highway user revenue from his budget, that probably, that decision probably won't be made until after you make a budget. The project open stakes, POS money, I, I, the way I understood it was that was kind of, that was kind of being frozen. Maybe that'll loosen up. The state aid for police protection, that was kind of being, being frozen or cut off or reduced. All of those things, particularly like the state aid for police protection, that's part of, that's part of what we budget every year because that pays for, for our police protection or helps pay for that. So there's a lot of things that are beyond the, the control of, of, of our, of our people here and I just don't know where, where that's going to land us, so we have to, you know, feather that into the discussion somewhere too. And we'll just do the best we can, but it could well be that we adopt the budget and then find out afterwards that things that we planned, you know, aren't going to work quite the way we think, so we'll just go ahead, but anyway, my idea for the 17th is what I've outlined for you, if you have other ideas on it.
That works.
Please let me know, but try to do that in the next couple, three or four days because I will be working on that next week and there's not much, not much time. So that's the schedule. At last, at last month's meeting, we, we talked about the capital budget a little bit and how there was more to the capital budget than just the road plan and we talked about what the, some of the other items were and then, and then Councilman Huffman asked, well, he'd like to see that, those two things meshed together. So this next page, if you look at that, the first, the first section of it, I have it labeled as combined paving and capital budget. So what I did there was just take the five-year paving program and our five-year capital budget, added them together, we came up with that line, it's called total, and then below that you can see the impact on the tax rate. So if you were to try and fully fund both of those programs, that's what it would, that's what it would take right now. And that does not include the streetscape. That does not include any, any money for streetscape. Okay? So let's just put that in the back of your head. So then the next section, that section in the middle, I have, I've labeled as smoothed capital budget. And smooth just means I took out the highs and the lows and made it level, but I didn't do much else. I took the paving program and stretched that from five years to 10 years. So that brought it down to $175,000. And I took the capital budget and stretched it up from five years to six years, so brought that down to $100,000 a year. So that brought it down to a program of $275,000 a year, which would still require you to make a 23 cent per year tax. make a 23 cent per year tax rate, if you tried to fund those fully right then and there. Again, nothing related to streetscapers in that. So that, I just wanted to, you know, that was two, two different, two different views of, of that. So what might, what might we be doing in the next couple of years in terms of our growth of revenues? That bottom section is additional revenue, maybe I should put that as potentially, or potential additional revenue, because nothing is certain here. We will, in, in this calendar year, we are in the area of the county that's gonna get new assessments. And the county has done their analysis of it, and if you flip the page, just flip over one page, you'll see a table there. We are in with Group One South Carroll, and they've actually been very, I think, very optimistic, and see that as a 10% rise in assessments phased in over three years, 3.33% for Group One South Carroll. When I, you know, when I think of South Carroll, including Eldersburg and that area, I don't know that we're gonna get the same reaction here that they're gonna get there. But that was, that was, that's the information that the county is using for their, for their program. So flipping back to the page with all the numbers on it, our assessable basis is $126 million. And I took two scenarios there, one if our, our base were to grow 4.5%, which would be 1.5% per year, another if our base were to grow 9% or 3% a year, again, because we have to phase it in over three years. You can see that it really doesn't create a whole lot additional revenue, so you can see, if, if it goes up 4.5%, which I think is, you know, is a pretty good adjustment.
Pretty optimistic.
$4,000, it doesn't, it doesn't do a whole lot. Even when you get out to year three, you're looking at $12,000. So it's not like you're gonna get a big windfall, it's gonna take a long, long time to crawl back out of this, these, these, these drops. The assessable base at 3%, you know, it's a little more optimistic. The Verizon antenna revenue, again, we don't know what that number's gonna be, just based on what we've seen in other leases and other terms that have been done recently, you know, I feel comfortable saying that we're gonna get around $35,000 a year for that. And then you can see that grow a little bit, so maybe three years from now, you might have an additional $50,000 worth of revenue to work with, but you're not gonna have, you're not gonna have boatloads of extra revenue, it just, it's gonna take a long time. And say, and say we get 10 homes built up in one of these developments in the next three years, you know, that might be $3 million, you know, 10 times 300,000, 3 million. Again, that, that only gets you a few dollars, it doesn't, it doesn't really lift you a whole lot. So I'm not trying to paint a gloomy picture, but I just wanted you to know, this is the same information I'm gonna be working into the presentation next week, so if anyone has any other thoughts or other information on that, I'd like you to, to share that with me too, but that's, that's just the way I'm seeing it based on what I know at this point, so. I'll stop and...
Thank you, Frank. I know we, we've had a lot of discussions on this in the past month, and I'm sure we'll continue those discussions. These numbers aren't in concrete by any means, but for discussion.
I think the, the assumptions are reasonable.
Yeah. Yep. All right. Social media policy, Kim and I have been working on that. We used one from Kim's work and one from Kevin's work, and kinda combined it. Kim finalized the draft and sent it to Michelle just recently, so really haven't had a lot of time to...
I'm gonna have it read.
Yeah, so once everybody gets a chance to read that, I gave everybody a copy tonight, and we'll discuss that further at the town work session. Ready? Backyard composting, that's not on your agendas, it's on mine. Got an email last week, and I can email this information to you, but it's about backyard composting, cuts down on our tonnage if everybody were to participate, but the bins are like $42 apiece, so it's something we can look at, you have to buy, depending on which model, like 20 of them, and give people an option to compost a little bit, so we'll, I'll have more information on that at our work session, and I'll email that out to everybody. Anybody have anything else under new business? All right, under announcements, Walk With The Mayor, next Tuesday, February 10th at 5:30 p.m., meet at Town Hall. Town Workshop will be at Ziegler Hall due to the holiday, we're moving it from Monday to Tuesday, February 17th at 7:00 p.m. Ed, if I'm correct, probably upstairs, probably upstairs, there's a elevator in case someone needs assistance. That's at 500 Main Street, Ziegler Hall, the conference center. New Windsor Fire Department, you heard earlier Pancake Breakfast Sunday, March 1st, from 7:00 to 11:00 down Windsor Station, and everybody on the council got an invitation for the MML chapter meeting on Thursday, March 19th at Antrim, so respond to Roma as soon as you can. Anybody have any other announcements? All right, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, signify, anybody saying aye?
Aye.
So carry.